Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission Meeting of June 4, 2025. We begin our agenda today with a pledge of allegiance if you'll join us. Thank you, Ms. Castro. Will you do the coverage announcement?
Good morning, Chair Bradley. So Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB TV Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Poak, Sandinas Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of the Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB TV Channel 20. This hearing will also be streamed live on CSB TV website and will be available for download in a day or two.
Thank you. Continue with the roll call.
So Commissioner Park.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
And Chair Bradley.
Here.
And then we have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, do you want to continue with the Agenda Status Report, item number four? I have to say, I feel a little rusty. It's been a little slow, but it's coming back. Click, click, click.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the Commission. In regards to the status for our agenda today, we have one item on consent, which is a vacation of easement at Bethany Lane in the Orchid area. And then we have two items on our standard agenda, a presentation on the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program by Long Range Planning. And then we do have a presentation by Community Services Department on the workforce housing study and then a discussion. My understanding is that everybody's ready and prepared to present on those items today, and so I can move to the projection report.
Please.
So our next hearing will be next week in Santa Maria. There is one item on that hearing, which is a development plan and general plan amendment and rezone for the FAMCON Pipe and Supply Development Project, and it's in the Orchid area. And then after June 11, we don't have anything projected until we get to July 2. As of on this, as of the distribution of this projection report, there's one item on July 2. However, it's my understanding that there's another item, consent item, that they were considering adding to July 2, which is a government co-consistency. And then on July 9, we have no items. And then July 16 is not your planning question. And then we have, we'll reconvene on July 30 for two items, and that will be here in Santa Barbara. The Brick Barn Winery Tier 3 project and then a housing project in the Long Poak area, the Constellation Land Development LLC Hotel and Residential project. When we look out past July 30, we don't have any items projected, but I'm sure Mr. Seawards is going to be working with his team to add items to the projection report to fill out the year. So back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. It's a little curious that we're a little light, but I will enjoy while this exists. Commissioner Park, did you have something to add?
Yes. Is it worthwhile to take up the topic now of canceling the June 25 hearing? Doesn't look like there's time to notice anything for that, anyway.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Park, that is correct. We can take that up. We won't be, yeah, as of right now, I don't anticipate us having any items on that date. So we could cancel June 25. And I think there may be some interest in looking at July 2, so we could discuss both those items right now if you'd like.
I think that's a good idea. Commissioner Park, I mean, Commissioner Reed.
In terms of July 2, I'm not going to be able to attend. I'm going to be back in DC and Virginia.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Yes, Madam Chair. We had a chance to mention to Mr. Wilson that the July 2 meeting conflicts with a long-time vacation plan I had over the 4th of July. So I'm hopeful we could have another meeting almost any time to make up for that item. There's only one item on the agenda at this point.
Well, it sounds like we're down two for July 2, and I'm guessing we couldn't accelerate any of those onto the June 25. So are we looking at what?
Well, July 9 is there, but it's empty. And maybe those things for the 2nd should be moved over to July 9.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I have spoke briefly with staff. That was what we would do. We would just move those items down to July 9, and then we'd relocate that to a Santa Barbara hearing. So those items are a Santa Barbara items. So we would cancel July 2 if you wanted to. We could cancel July 2, and then we would just add those to the agenda of July 9.
Okay, so we want to cancel that and June 25? Sounds like that's the desired. Do you need an emotion, or do we just tell you? Oh, wait. Hang on. Oh, you have, yeah, the days. Okay.
So Madam Chair, can we just trail that item until the end?
Absolutely.
And then we'll come back.
Let's just do that to the end of the agenda. That's great. Okay, so with that, we move to our public comment portion of the agenda. This is a time on our agenda when anyone can speak to the Commission for items not otherwise agendized on our published schedule. And I don't know that we have anyone who's signed up for that. Ms. Castro, do you have anyone? Hey. Okay.
Yes, that's for public comment.
Okay, so we have one speaker, Brown, Mr. Brown, Ms. Brown with Craytech. Yes, oh, hello, Otis. Hi.
My name is Otis Califf. I'm representing Craytech, the County Riding and Hiking Trails Advisory Committee. And I just want to alert you that the recreational master plan that Parks has been working on now for several years will be coming up to you probably in six to nine months. And in preparations for this, there were 7,000 interviews done around the county, and definitely hiking and trails are the favorite outdoor recreation activity on the county. Considering the housing element, the Board of Supervisors said that trails and open space are essential to health and well-being for people in the county. So we have lost our tools for acquiring trails, like in Montecito, you know, the way through small developments, medium-sized developments, we can no longer exact trails. And so through the master plan, there are new ways of getting public trails. And I want you to start thinking about that and preparing for that. We just need new tools. Craytech looks forward to working with you on the future on this. When projects come before you, consider, are there trails from the PRT maps, the Parks and Recreational Trails maps? Are there trails through these properties, dream trails? Or, and has the project been presented to Craytech so that we can advise on it? There have been some problems that we haven't been informed about things. For example, the Valley View Trail in Orchid, there were a lot of problems with that recently and creates quite a bit of public uproar, and Craytech wasn't informed about it. So when these kind of big bills come before the Board of Supervisors, for example, the housing element, the board is just overwhelmed. And what they say is they really need a well-baked package when it gets to them. And I think it's incumbent upon us here to try to prepare this kind of legislation for them. And we're recommending that, or we're very hopeful that the Planning Commission can have a, maybe workshop on the recreational master plan, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't leave. Commissioner Park, do you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I will comment on some of this when I get to my own report for district.
For now, Commissioner Reed.
I have a question. Could you elaborate? You mentioned a trail problem in Orchid. Could you?
Yeah, I'm not.
Name of the trail?
I'm not very clear about that, but there was, yeah, we had a presentation on it, and apparently it was washed out pretty badly, the Valley View Trail. It was really damaged, and then it was reconstructed. And I don't know, there wasn't public notification about it, and there was just a lot of brouhaha. So, and the open space people up there were real upset about it.
Okay.
It was maybe, it was probably another communications issue. You know, it could have all been averted.
All right, thank you. I'll look into it.
Can I, I'm happy to provide some context if.
Madam Chair and Commissioners.
We're speaking.
Yeah. Shannon Reece. We aren't agendized to have a discussion on this.
Right.
So I recommend that we, if we want to have further discussion, we agendize a topic. But just to point out, there's two things. And the rec master plan is being processed through the Parks and through Community Services Division. We have a small role, which is ordinance movements that are adjacent to it. So the recommendation is for the speaker to coordinate with the Parks Division as far as the rec master plan goes. I know Commissioner Park and I have been working with them on that. There's going to be a component that may come before the Commission, but we aren't agendized to have specific discussions on any item that's not on the agenda today.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Califf, for bringing it. Okay, with that, we actually continue on to our Planning Commissioners informational reports. And I know Commissioner Park had a couple of things he wanted to cover, so please proceed.
Yes, the first thing I'd like to speak about is the Agricultural Tourism Summit that I attended in May. And David Lackey was there. We got stuck in a winery together as our bus got stuck in the parking lot, which was actually my favorite session, not just drinking the wine, but talking to people. You know, speaking of Mr. Lackey, obviously, he's right here. And I noticed on Tuesday morning, as I was going down there, I thought, okay, the thing I really want to see is their session on regulatory information. And then I saw, oh, well, one of the speakers was David Lackey, and it was all about the AEO. And I thought, I'm going to drive to San Diego County to go see somebody I see all the time, a subject that I kind of like still have dreams about. But I'm glad I did. We made a lot of good contacts, both Mr. Lackey and I did. We finally got to meet Cassandra, who has that long name that's hyphenated that I can't pronounce, from Hip Camp. And she's a delightful person, a great speaker, and has lots of insight. We both learned that the whole world is watching. What I heard over and over again at the summit was, well, Santa Barbara was the first with our ordinance. I wasn't aware of that, but that we were the first with an ordinance like this, and they all wanted to know how we got there. I did not tell them about the politics involved, but that'll come later. And it's just got a lot of attention. So we want to make sure that we continue to do a great job on it and not let it kind of get lost in bureaucratic tangles and make sure this thing works. But there's a lot of attention. One thing that David and I both commented upon to each other was there are a lot of high-ranking state officials that joined together in a very long keynote address. And they talked about this regional plan and that regional plan and this organization. And neither of us have ever heard of them, these different things, the regions that we're part of and so forth. I think it has to do with promotion or something. I'm not really sure, but it's something we'll want to investigate. We also kind of had similar views to the properties that we were touring, that some of them seem more like a, almost like a little Disneyland than the kind of ag tourism we've discussed in our ordinance, you know, where you have a primary focus on the agriculture and then you allow uses that are compatible, that can bring another stream of income. And I was taken aback by some of them. One was, had a larger area for its corn maze than they did for the ag on the property. Remember that one? And they had a speakeasy inside the corn maze. I mean, it's just interesting ideas. And, but, you know, it struck me, and I discussed this with David, that in an area like San Diego, a population of around 2 million in that county and then 15 million people to the north, that they can do things like that and encourage people. Is it agriculture not per se? But, you know, for an urban person to go to a 12-acre farm and wander around and see strawberries and things, it's a portal into the world of agriculture. So it's a way people can learn to appreciate it, and it's okay. I'm not sure it's okay here and under our ordinance. It certainly actually isn't. It goes beyond what we have an ordinance, but it's something we should be aware of. Some other things I noticed was that the conference was populated by farmers from small farms, organic farms and things like that. And they were mostly very young people. So we, by being involved in this, we're helping young people get into agriculture, which is very important. You know, when I speak publicly, I ask people, what's the rarest thing in agriculture? And the answer is always young farmers. And so it's about that kind of agriculture in allowing them to sustain themselves and thrive. And that helps brand all agriculture in the county. So it's all a good thing, but it's something we should notice. I also noticed there is a whole lot of people of color. And I thought that was exciting because it showed that all kinds of people are getting into these small farm types of operations. And if we can support those, it's a very democratic thing for our county and for our country. A final comment I have is that there were some interesting presentations. One was interesting over long. It was on the same panel as David's and kind of took up a lot of his time. I'm sure he remembers it. But it was that some counties have somewhat of a different focus on ag tourism than we've had. We've focused on the regulatory side so far in putting together an ordinance that allows things to flourish. And we worked hard and I think did a good job. A next step, and something that some counties are doing, is they have a coordinated centralized promotion for trails, for tourism, for ag tourism. And so they even take money out of, wasn't it out of the TOT, David, where Yolo County? Took 2% out of their transient settlement tax to pay for a promotional department on agriculture there. That's the one. That's the one that took up so much of David's time. But actually had some interesting programs. So that's something we might discuss in, in the future and go to a somewhat different perspective. And this relates actually to the presentation Mr. Kalif made. I've been at some meetings with him and with members of the Board of Supervisors about, okay, how can we exploit the success we've had with the Ag Enterprise Ordinance and, and make it actually work for people and do the same thing with the REC Master Plan? And there is some momentum towards having some workshops here, one on the REC Master Plan and one on trails in general sometime in the future. And that's, that'll be worthy of discussion. So I'm glad to discuss any of this with anyone who wants to at any time at greater length, but I won't bore you all with it today.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other informational reports? Not seeing any. Then let's proceed to our Item 8 on the agenda, which is our approval of the minutes of May 7. Does anybody have any corrections or a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Commissioner Cooney, you had a comment first.
No, it's all right. I did read them and didn't find anything wrong. And so I would second the motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 7. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. I have a few items to cover this morning. Just a quick reminder that we are going to be having budget hearings coming up. That is, let me get my dates correct here. I believe it is the week of the 16th. So if you're interested in monitoring that, please do. These, these budget hearings actually go pretty quickly. Most of the conversation happens during the budget workshops that are in April. So you, you will get a presentation of what's happening in each of the departments and then they will take action. I wanted to update the PC that the Board took action on the pro-housing designation on May 13th for the county. And that is something we apply for with the state. And we worked fairly closely with HCD, CSD did, and Jesse Steele from formerly Long Range Planning, now with the CEO's Office. And so that designation will help the county bring in additional funding of grant money and those types of things. So it helps us with a scoring, if you will, in grant applications. So the Board, so we were submitting that to the state and should find out, I'm not exactly sure when, but they can tell us when they come up. To approve the application so that we could submit it to the state.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, I don't know if you've followed in the newspaper, but at that same hearing, there was a majority of the Board that moved to direct both CSD and Planning and Development to come back in October with an outline of what a work program would look like for amortizing oil and gas facilities out of the county.
Interesting. Okay.
So, we will be going back. We're, we're looking at what's happening in the city of LA and the county of LA right now. They are both moving forward. They both had some challenges and had to modify their existing programs. And so we are looking at all of the information available. We're going to come back to the Board in October with a rough outline of what a program would look like, what the cost would be and how much staff time that would take and what other projects would be bumped from the long-range work program for us to take that up. And then, just a couple of items that came yesterday to the Board. They weren't under Planning and Development, but they're something the Planning Commission could, may be interested in. And that was the Fire Department was before the Board on a couple of items. One, the new maps, high-fire hazard maps. And as you may have observed, the state produced their maps, I don't know, two months ago, something like that. And they modified the way they were doing their modeling. And so their maps looked different than they had previously and didn't include some things that we think are important locally. So, the local jurisdictions can increase the high-fire hazard area, but cannot decrease it. And so essentially, what the Fire Department said is, we want to maintain our local responsibility area that had been mapped since, I think, 2007. So there wasn't a lot of change really for local responsibility area, except we, that local responsibility area sort of expanded where the state contracted. So essentially, the boundary is about the same along the foothills of where the high-fire hazard area starts. So those maps are available on the Internet and on the Fire Department's website if you're interested in reviewing them. They also brought forward the Santa Barbara Foothills CWPP, which is the Wildfire Protection Plan. There's a number of those plans that exist in, in the community and along the foothills. City of Galida has one. This Foothills one was an update to one that we had. Then there's one in Montecito and one in Carpinteria. So it's sort of piecing together. And I think Gaviota Coast also has one. So they presented that and it really talks about how to manage fire risk and what evacuation scenarios look like. And there's public education component to these items. There was a lot of work done by the Fire Department and the Fire Safe Council with the local community and just about educating people. Because the, as the Fire Chief says, the most important thing is get out early. Do not wait to be told to leave.
Yeah.
So, there's just a lot of, a lot going on about that. And the Fire Safe Council has a website that has all of these plans that are listed under their resources tab. So if any of the Commissioners are interested in those, you can take a look at it. And then, the CEO's Office brought forward a couple of items on cannabis. And the one I think that the Commission would be interested in was the discussion about adjusting the cap for cannabis. And that lives in the CEO's Office under the business license. The Planning Department can approve as many applications as people want to submit and they will sit until they can get a license. We have not reached the cap in either the Carpinteria area or the inland area. The original cap in Carpinteria is 186 acres and the one in inland area was 1,575. Because of the, I think, the changes in the market, they're just haven't, we've seen applications withdraw and not, new ones have not really been coming in at any pace. So what the Board did was they decided to reset the cap and they included everything that had been issued for, for land use, approved but not issued, meaning they haven't taken that second step to finish all their conditions, and submitted. So anything that was really in the process or had been in the process and had moved through it would be included in this new cap. So that changed it to roughly 140 acres in the Carpinteria Valley and 1,411 acres in the inland area, down from 1,575.
So, am I to interpret that to mean that there's that much acreage pending in one of those stages now, even though we've seen, we've heard, maybe anecdotally, that a lot of cases are being withdrawn because of the market and other reasons? So, all the Board was doing was trying to conform the caps down to what's currently pending?
Yeah.
That's an interesting.
I mean, there was a time when we had applications in for well over the cap, but those have fallen off.
Okay.
Yeah. Particularly in the inland area.
Okay.
Yep. And then, there are a couple of future Board items. We have our Emergency Shelters, an item that was heard by the PC that is going on June 24th. The G and K Appeal will be going on July 1st. And Mobile Home Park Overlay will be going on the 15th. And I, I don't recall if I reported on the action that they took on the IV rental program. Have I reported to you on that?
I don't.
Yeah, I don't think we have. So, I don't have an, what day were we at the Board at that, on that? The second reading was May 13th. So, there's a program that we are implementing. It's funded actually through the lawsuit that the county had with the university for not providing housing. And, yes, thank you, Council. The, it is a pilot program for rental inspections.
Oh, I heard about this.
For us to review housing code violations, building code violations. And the goal is to get the landlords to really clean up the facilities that these kids are living in. So that is a pilot program. It covers Isla Vista. The initial effort to do required inspections is going to be focused on Del Plaia, along the bluffs. And that's going to start in the summer, those inspections, when the kids, students are, hopefully, most of them have gone, although many stay and continue to live in Isla Vista. And then, the hope is that that will be wrapped up before the school year and that any kind of issues can be addressed by the landlords during that timeframe. And so the Second District and Mr. Wilson, who's overseeing that program, have been doing a lot of outreach and been working with IV CSD out in the community and UCSB.
I have a follow-up question about that. I think the intention of the litigation was to try to get more housing in Isla Vista. So this is a inspection program that's going to probably, hopefully, improve stock. But was there some strategic decision made to not, like, fund Housing Authority units, actually the creation of new units and just look at existing housing stock?
Well.
On a really high level?
Yeah, Madam Chair. The, the Housing Authority doesn't generally build student housing. So if that's what you're referring to. I mean, the student housing would be more or less focused on the UCSB campus or in Isla Vista. And actually, the university did actually purchase one of our Housing Element sites and is the Friendship Manor vacant site.
All right.
And they're going to be, they're going to be building housing on that. I think for visiting professors and, I, I can't remember the, exactly who that's going to be housing, but, so no, there wasn't a discussion about using that money to fund housing outside of the university's control. I didn't hear any conversation about that. That's something you could certainly ask your.
Okay. Because I know Galida, Galida had litigation also in that regard.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if the city of Santa Barbara did, but it's just, you know, it's, it's a different way of approaching housing provision. And I think that everyone's anxious to get more units. So, I was wondering where, how that slipped off to a no-net new count versus improvement of existing units.
And I, I should note that there, most of our builders remedy applications, and I know we're not on the agenda to discuss this, so I'm going to keep this short, are in Isla Vista. And so we have a lot of housing, new housing units that are proposed in IV. So that will increase the stock. And I think you, the Commission knows about many of those projects.
Right.
That should help increase the stock. But, yes, I don't, I didn't, wasn't privy to any other discussions about the use of that funding.
Okay. Thank you. One other question. When you talked about the fire, the CWWP, does this, is this at all related to the new Fire Safe standards that I know all the fire marshals have been going around and explaining to homeowners groups and looking at plant check changes where you have to have less vegetation close to your house? I mean, it's very site-specific. Did, did that have anything to do with it? Or these wildland interface plans is a separate topic?
I, you know what, I didn't, I haven't reviewed it thoroughly, but my guess is that it is covered in there because they talk about, you know, the zero, I'm going to forget the term for it, but that you can't have vegetation in some areas within five feet of your structure. That's the new standard. So I know those are discussed in the CWPP, but I, I'm not an expert on it. And so I, I think it would be worth reaching out to the Fire Department or looking online at the Fire Safe Council about, about that. But I assume it was included.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Did anyone else have any other questions? Commissioner Park?
I have some questions about two things that the Board's doing that never came here. And maybe that's the intention of the Board, not to have them have come here. One, of course, was the cannabis caps and, and also the, the oil phase-out. I don't quite know what to call that. It's not clear to me, will, will we have anything to do with either of those things? Will those come before us at all?
Yeah. Commissioner Park through the chair. So the, the cap is in Chapter 50.
Yeah.
And that is outside the purview of the Planning Commission. So that has always lived with the Board solely. So that will not be something that, that will be discussed at the Planning Commission. But any kind of changes to our codes about the oil and gas, I think they would include some changes in our land use element, but I, or, I'm sorry, our land use development code, but I, I'm not exactly sure of the scope. My expectation is that is something that would be coming through the Planning Commission.
Just big picture, and you, you know my philosophy on this. I think that the Planning Commission exists in large part, well, to serve the public, but also to serve the Board. And I think that many things that we tear into and spend a lot of time on, the Board couldn't possibly afford the time to do that. That's, that's kind of our, our service. And I'm concerned about that, particularly on this oil phase-out. I mean, whether there's a phase-out or not is way above my pay grade. I understand that. But I, I have concerns in that it's, it's going to be an incredibly complicated thing to do. And I'm going to be surprised if it can be worked out by October, but maybe.
Oh, yeah, no, October is just a definition of scope.
Yeah. Okay.
And a cost.
Even that.
Assessment. Yeah. So we, then work would begin, if the Board directed it at that point. So, we, we're not drafting any ordinance changes or anything like that between now and October. It's really just to figure out what this, how much effort it will take to move a program like that forward and what the overall cost would be. Because there's an EIR and an amortization study. And both take time and cost money. And so the Board needs to get an idea of what is involved in a program like this. So that's what will happen before October. And then they will either say, yes, we want the Department, both CSD and Planning and Development, to move forward with something like that and begin a process, or no, we're going to hold off till the next fiscal year. That would be the, that would be the determination at that point.
Well, I, I would hope we can be involved.
I think there, I, I can't imagine why you, the PC wouldn't be involved.
My, my, just a concern that, that I have is, I'm often, maybe this comes from being a litigator for 50 years. I'm looking at when things go bad and the rotten cases, not the good cases. And I'm really worried about the thousands of old wells that we have. And it's, it's just like cars. If you want to get air pollution reduced, do you say, no new cars? Or do you say, let's get rid of the old cars and just have new cars? And it's kind of like that with this oil production as we wind it down. It's actually kind of like that with these caps. Because in the cannabis cap, we have a lot of projects who are approved that weren't in places I wanted to see them. I don't like them. And I'd actually rather see new ones to replace them than, than keep the old ones. So I, I don't know about how that's all going to work out. And, so there you go. I look forward to hearing more about all these topics.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
I find it interesting that at the same time, the county's smiling and patting each other and back, on the back about the AEO ordinance and the opportunities of ag holders in the county to supplement their income, at the same time they're doing that, they're considering eliminating the oil business that a great many ranchers and farmers rely on to provide an alternate source of income. And in the case of cattle ranchers, allows them to let their land remain in a natural state for grazing. And in the case of cattle ranchers, allows them to let their land remain in a natural state for grazing rather than having to switch to a more intense level and plowing it up. Which is, it's an interesting anomaly, uh, that I think needs to be considered, uh, when they're embarking on this very questionable, uh, process.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions. So, that was a hefty director's report. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
It's been a while, thank you.
Take care, Detective.
Okay, concluding that, now we move on to our consent agenda. Item 10, uh, we have one item. Ms. Castro, do you want to read that into the record, please?
Uh, the following is the request, oh, the hearing, of the request of Debbie, um, Hebbleton, uh, General Services Department to consider case number 25GLV00008 for a determination that vacation of right-of-way confirm, conforms with the comprehensive plan of the County of Santa Barbara pursuant, pursuant to California Government Code Section 65402A.
Thank you. And being a consent item, we normally decline staff presentation or anything. Does anybody want to pull this from the consent calendar? Or do we have a motion to approve as submitted? And do we have to open public comment? Do I need to open public comment? Okay. Does anybody want to approve as submitted?
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve as submitted. Thank you to CSD staff for being here, I think. But, um, motion to approve as submitted, so, roll call? I don't know.
Yeah, well, just a roll call. Um, Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
And Chair Bradley?
Aye.
The Volkeris 520.
Thank you. All right. Do we need a moment to rejigger the staff presentations? Okay, you want to take a, like, any break or just five minutes or?
Yeah, Madam Chair, can we take like a five-minute break so we can get set up?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Um, the Planning Commission's reconvening and we're taking up our item number, uh, 10, 11, 1. Our five-year capital improvement program. Ms. Castro, can you read that into the record?
The following is the hearing at the request of the Planning and Development, Develop, Department staff on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to review the proposal of the new projects in the five-year capital improvement program for physical years 2025 through 2030. And reports to the Board of Supervisors as their conformity with the Compre- Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Government Code Section 65401 and 6502.
Thank you. I know we don't do Brown Act disclosures. It's an administrative item or legislative item. So, we go straight to our staff presentation.
Uh, thank you, Chair Bradley and members of the commission. Uh, long-range planning staff is here to present today this next item. And I'd like to introduce Danielle Moore, who'll be giving today's presentation.
Good morning, Chair Bradley and commissioners. My name is Danielle Moore and I'm also joined here by Lila Spring and David Lackey. And today, we'll be presenting to you a 2025 to 2030 Capital Improvement Program Comprehensive Plan Conformity Review. Today's hearing is to review, uh, all the new projects in the five-year 2025 to 2030 Capital Improvement Program, known as the CIP, and consider conformity of all the new projects with the comprehensive plan as required by Government Code Sections 65401 and 65402. In the following slides, we will be walking you through the CIP process and the government code requirements. The Capital Improvement Program is a compilation of proposed, uh, projects. It is a five-year cycle and it is reviewed annually. Um, all the projects implement various plans across the county and is prepared and administered by the county executive office. This flow chart shows the five steps in the CIP process. In the first step, each of the county departments submits the new projects to the county executive office. Afterwards, the Budget and Research Division prepares the CIP. In the third step, the Board of Supervisors conceptually approves the CIP and officially forwards it to your commission today for your recommended, um, findings on it. Afterwards, we will take your recommended, uh, actions to, back to the board at a public hearing for receive and file. The first of the two steps in the review process is Government Code Section 65401 review, which requires a list of new projects recommended for planning, initiation, or construction in the upcoming fiscal year to be reviewed at the programmatic level. The second step in the analysis is to review all the new projects for Government Code Section 65402, which show, which has the three triggers on the slide, which we look for. And they include the acquisition or disposal of real property, the vacation or abandonment of streets, including any easements and road right-of-way, and the construction of any new public buildings or structures. In the following slides, we will walk you through staff's recommendations and findings on the new projects proposed. In total, 24 new projects were proposed that staff reviewed. Fifteen of the projects were not previously reviewed. Eight of the projects were, uh, reviewed previously but found to have insufficient information at that time. And now, new information is now available that allows us to review them. And one project was found in conformity previously, but the project description changed so greatly as to require re-review this year. This pie chart shows the divisions and county departments and the amount of new projects they have proposed. The two leaders for this year were Public Works Transportation Division, which had 13 projects, and General Services Department, which had five projects. Out of the 24 total projects staff reviewed, uh, 15 projects were found to conform to the comprehensive plan. And nine projects were found to have insufficient information for conformity determination, and they will have to come back in the future for additional review. Four of the 24 total projects trigger Government Code Section 65402 review. Staff found that two of the projects conform to the comprehensive plan and two of the projects are insufficiently developed due to being in an early stage of, um, development. And six projects currently have an unknown status due to them also being in, um, in an early stage of development, where it is unknown to us if they're going to have any triggers, um, in their project that will trigger, uh, 65402 conformity review. The CIP is a compilation and prioritization of new capital projects in the year. It does not appropriate funds or otherwise commit the Board of Supervisors to particular projects. Therefore, um, the CIP itself and this conformity review is not classified as a project under SEQA and is not subject to environmental review. Staff recommends that you take the recommended actions as shown in page one of the May 27 staff report. Uh, let's see. Those recommendations are also summarized on this slide. That concludes our presentation and we are available now for any questions. We would also like to acknowledge the important role of General Services in facilitating the CIP as a critical resource in the CIP and conformity review proj-, uh, process. We have an audience here, Jean Green, Assistant Director of General Services, and Diana Orstaga, Capital Division Chief of General Services. Thank you for working with us through the process.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Uh, does the commission have any questions for staff on the presentation? I do. Sorry about this, but hopefully, it, it's fairly basic. When we talk about things that don't have enough information, so you couldn't include these in the bundled 65402, that means that they would come back later, like our consent item today. So, we see 6540, I always get the ones for individual things, not programmatic, throughout the year if they haven't been already included in the bundle, right? If they're already in the bundle, then we never see them for that determination down the road. Correct?
Uh, there, Chair Bradley, yes, that is correct. Um, some of the projects may have one, may have Government Code Section 65401 currently reviewed through the CIP or will need that perhaps later on if they're early on, or they might need additional 65402 review with the bundle or later on as well.
Okay. So, it doesn't mean that they don't move forward or they have to wait a year for this determination. It just means they weren't caught in the big bundle first, but they can come in individually, right?
To Chair Bradley, yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then, uh, the, I mean, we've seen these for a number of years. I don't know how easy it would be to give us a map of where these things are. When I went through the attachment, I understood where all these are and I looked at them up on Google Maps, thank God. But it would be really helpful if that was some kind of a attachment. Does that ever happen in the CIP? Do, do they have, uh, because when, the references to a page on the CIP, and I don't, I didn't open up that link, and I don't know what that page looks like, if there's a geographic location of it? Or is it just, I guess I should have looked at the APN numbers? Or how can I understand geographically where these are?
To Chair Bradley, um, the APN numbers are probably the best reference, which on our end, we can plug in and pull up in the map and see their location. Um, but that is a possible addition we can do in future years. That will be helpful to maybe make a GIS map showing the locations of all the proposed projects. Or we can put a table in by district potentially. That will be helpful.
It might be helpful. I'd be interested in what the rest of the commission, you know, thinks about that. Maybe it's just me. And then, on, uh, so, so on these cases, I mean, I highlighted a couple of them. The ones, in terms of permitting, we're used to seeing, you know, applications for land development things. And there are lots of cases here where it's the jail or it's the mental hel-, mental wellness center or there's a construction of a project. Does it ever come back to the Planning Commission as part of a development plan? Because I see that there's certified environmental documents for some of these cases, but we haven't ever seen them as a build-out of a case. Do you understand what I'm asking about? Or is this our only look at public-funded projects? I understand in the public right-of-way roadway projects, there's actually, uh, exemption, right, for public works projects in the public right-of-way in the inland area, correct?
Yeah, Chair Bradley, for the examples that you gave, like the, the projects at the North County Jail, or, um, as you know, the, uh, county isn't subject to the land use permits in the inland area. So, that's kind of one of the functions of the CIP is to, this is the touch point where you can look at at least conformity with the overall comprehensive plan. So, uh, the Planning Commission wouldn't necessarily see, um, a development plan for a project that's on the, uh, a county project, uh, in the inland area. In the coastal zone, they are subject to, um, permits and so, but more often, those are smaller CDPs that you generally, the Planning Commission wouldn't see.
So, like the lookout park improvements? It's the CDP but without a hearing, so we wouldn't ever see that.
Correct.
But, improvements to the jail or the, uh, waste sortings facility or whatever, which are fairly major public works projects, those are exempt from discretionary review. They just get a land use permit as part of our code, right?
If they're in the inland area, they wouldn't get a, a land use permit.
They would not.
No. In the inland area.
That's important for people to understand. I, um, okay, I, that's probably my own question, it was more process than specifics. But, um, so, if the public wanted to track any of these things, how do they do it? They do it at the county board on budget hearings or on the CIP adoption and the return- return with this conformity recommendation, or how does the public track these things?
To Chair Bradley, the best bet is to probably track it through General Services each year with the Capital Improvement Program, when that is brought in the early spring in the third step for conceptual review. That is probably the best bet for the public to be informed about what projects are being proposed, where, and to raise any concerns with the team or with the Board of Supervisors. Additionally, they could also track it through our conformity review, which is brought back consistently and annually.
Yeah. Counsel?
Chair Bradley, just to add, a lot of these projects also involve construction contracts with companies that are building it, and those contracts generally go to the board if they're above $200,000, so that's another public opportunity.
That's a lot, yeah. Okay, my last question is, you know, when, as a result of the housing element, we have all these units in my lovely little second district and lots of other places in the county, and I only saw one transportation project on Cathedral Oaks. So, but I've heard that Public Works is talking to other departments about possibly roundabouts or improvements on Hollister Avenue, or things that are hopefully going to try to tie our infrastructure to serve those pending cases that are now on the drawing board or somewhere in plan check. None of those have gotten to the point of being a description. I mean, are you aware of any of that?
Chair Bradley and the Commission, so nothing specific related to the housing sites and any roadway improvements are currently factored into the CIP as a new project. I anticipate as those get developed and they identify the need, you know, what the exact need is. There was one project for Cathedral Oaks and 192 that looked at improving, it was more for traffic safety and pedestrian safety along that corridor, but that's kind of been a long-term project that they've been looking at, that they finally have funding for.
Right.
So it takes a while, both to identify what the needed project is, and then to program it for funding and early design and throughout the process through construction.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Ms. Reed, Ms. Reed?
I have a few questions. Just when I look at the nature of the projects on here, it seems with respect to the various lead departments on the project, General Services, most of their projects, they conform, they're all wrapped up, ready to go. When I look at, on the other hand, when we're out in the general public, and somebody knows who I am, what I'm doing, and they want to complain about something, it almost always involves traffic or transportation. So here's the thing. And two of the ones that are, you know, still have insufficient information are, it happened to be in my district, the Lakeview Orchid Road intersection and Union Valley Parkway. And actually, Lakeview Orchid Road is what the highest collision rate intersection in the county. Union Valley Parkway was beautiful at the beginning, but it's becoming overtaxed with traffic. And as we embrace the need for more housing, we've approved several developments right along Union Valley Parkway. So my question is, although I'm sure it's not your responsibility, does Public Works and Transportation, or anyone else in the county, have some system of prioritizing development on these projects that haven't yet met the standard of determination? Is there a system, or do these kind of proceed at random?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. Each department kind of looks at the needs of capital, you know, what capital projects. For this specific intersection, the kind of the Highway 135, Lakeview, as you know, it's been a challenging issue for decades.
A nightmare, you might say.
Yes. And I think its placement in the CIP is sort of as an early, it's been identified as a need to address it, and it's going to have a lot of different phases, and it's involved different, it's involving Caltrans, it's involving the City of Santa Maria, it's involving the county, to look at the different phases, because they all have portions within their own jurisdiction. So it's placed in the CIP initially to identify studies and modeling efforts to identify what potential solutions are there. Then it goes into, you know, once there's at least coordinated effort to identify the traffic and infrastructure improvements, then it'll start getting programmed into identifying available funding from either Caltrans or SB CAG, you know, whatever sources of funding. And so I would say it has been identified as a priority need, just because it's now placed as a project in the CIP, but it's at its very early stages. And so for our purpose in looking at it, there's just a lot of information and additional studies and evaluations that need to be looked at to identify what the improvements could be, so.
Thank you very much. I'm just looking for some answer that's better than, we're working on it, I know that, and particularly in the light of every housing project we deal with, one of the primary objections, as we know, if it's not parking, it's traffic. So having better, more efficient solutions would be greatly appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Do we have anyone in the public that wants to speak and address the Commission? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I moved too fast. Commissioner Cooney, did you have questions?
Well, yes, just a comment from the overview point of view. This is something that the Planning Commission deals with repeatedly, and it's my impression that really it's not an independent review that's contemplated, it's hearing the report, reading the report, but we don't dig into those that the conclusion is there's not enough information, or somehow it doesn't apply that we have to do that. But it's a step that the process requires for the Planning Commission to, if you will, rubber stamp the findings of its staff. And there's no reason that I can find why we should open these up and go through them one by one, because that work has been done, and these are your recommendations, so... But I don't want anybody in the process or out to assume that we've gone through, to the extent staff has at least, each of the projects to see whether they conform under these two code sections. But I'm looking at Mr. Lackey because he's not hesitant to correct me when I reach an assumption.
Commissioner Cooney, you have a firm grasp of the process, and yes, you are correct.
Read and review, don't dig. Yes, we get it. Okay, well, with that, no more questions from the Commission. We will see if there's any public comment.
Chair Bradley, we do not have any public comment.
Okay, and I don't have any slips either. So we open and we close the public comment portion of the meeting on this item, and get it back to our Commission for deliberation, or perhaps a motion. It's very straightforward. Yeah. Your light is on. Do you want to take a stab at the motion? It's even on the screen.
We've looked at it, we've heard the presentation. I see no reason we should not proceed with a motion to approve it and send it on to the Board of Supervisors. A motion, well, as outlined exactly from staff. It's in two places at once, okay. A motion that would include the staff recommendations.
Okay, I'll second the staff recommendation. As on the screen. All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. I think that's it. Consider a map next year. Thank you. Okay, Secretary Wilson, do we want to do another official break, or we can just hang here five minutes? We got?
Yeah, madam chair, we could do like a three-minute break, just so we could get set up.
Okay. Services Department, I know you have a time constraint, so we'll ask Ms. Castro to read this into the record from our agenda.
The County Planning Commission will receive a briefing from the Community Services Department's staffing regarding workforce housing.
Thank you. And as administrative item, we don't have any Brown Act disclosures, or, and I'm not sure, just checking if we have any public comments signed up. Probably not.
We do not have any public comment.
Well, I'd like to extend a thank you to you, because we have had our heads in housing for many months and many years, and so we know you've done some great work. We're anxious to hear what you have to share with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jesus Armus, Director of Community Services Department, and we have our housing development team here that will walk through the presentation. I simply wanted to offer a couple of introductory remarks and then turn it over to the staff. As we all know, not just the state, but Santa Barbara in particular, is experiencing housing challenges, both in terms of supply and affordability. And the Board of Supervisors took this issue on directly and suggested, as part of the continued deliberations on the housing element update and the work that the Commission did on the update, to look more specifically at opportunities for the county to take an active role in the development of affordable housing in the form of workforce housing. And so the Board, last year, authorized the commencement of a study that attempted to examine more carefully and more thoroughly some of county-owned properties to identify potential opportunities to redevelop them in a manner that responds to the need. And so we did make a presentation to the Board, and Joe Dzvanik, our Assistant Director, will lead the presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions at the conclusion.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I am Joe Dzvanik, the Assistant Director for the Housing and Community Development Division, which is in our Community Services Department. With me to my left is Ms. Lucille Boss. She is our, the Programs Manager for Housing, and she was really the main driver of our workforce housing study. To the right of me is Andrew Kish. If she was driving, he was definitely in the passenger seat there with her, pushing on this project, so thanks to both of them for lots of work on this issue. Next slide, please. So this slide summarizes the direction staff received from the Board of Supervisors following our presentation on the workforce housing study that we did to them on April 8th. We will review that same presentation with you today. Following our presentation to the Board, staff were directed to prioritize the release of an RFP in hiring a developer to build affordable housing on the current site of the probation building located at 123 East Correo Street, here in downtown Santa Barbara. And we also received direction, pardon me, we also received direction from the Board to further analyze the feasibility of converting the county's downtown campus parking lot located right outside this building for affordable housing as well. While none of the staff's recommendations were opposed, the Board specifically prioritized those two actions for staff to pursue. Next slide, please. The workforce housing study presented to you today consists of four segments, where staff describes, one, why our community needs this workforce housing study now more than ever; two, who in our community participated in the robust outreach used to guide this study; and an overview of the themes that were gleaned from that outreach; three, the six lines of analysis that were performed during the study and the outcomes of those analyses; and finally, how does the study recommend we move forward in our need to increase the availability of affordable housing for our working community? And with that, I turn it over to Lucille Boss.
Thank you, Joe. Good morning, Chair Bradley and Commissioners. As you are well aware, with housing costs among the highest in the state, Santa Barbara County is experiencing widespread housing affordability challenges. More specifically, the lack of housing affordable to our workforce affects every aspect of our lives, from local businesses and schools struggling to hire and retain workers, to amplified childcare challenges and long commutes between homes and workplaces, increasing freeway congestion and carbon emissions. The county's need for additional workforce housing is evident in the data points outlined in the study, including median income, median rent, median sales price, cost burden, and the regional housing needs allocation. The study presents the culmination of extensive stakeholder outreach and engagement involving key community members, developers, local businesses, and housing experts, combined with analysis of the community's workforce housing needs. This study prioritized stakeholder outreach, which was conducted from April to August 2024. Seventy organizations were invited to participate, nine meetings were held, and 15 organizations participated in those meetings comprised of housing developers, housing and community advocates, housing authorities, chambers of commerce, and school districts. The County of Santa Barbara is committed to addressing the critical need for workforce housing through a comprehensive and strategic implementation plan. Harrison Associates, the consultant, delivered a study that informs and describes future land use, housing projects, and programs which will be used to guide the county's response to the insufficient supply of workforce housing. This study included the following tasks, which are on the slide. Assessment of the workforce housing affordability which are on this slide: assessment of the workforce housing affordability gap, analysis of existing county programs, and analysis of model programs in other communities; study of preservation and retention of the affordable housing stock through homeownership, rehabilitation, and inclusionary housing; a report on successful employer-sponsored housing in the county and elsewhere in California; evaluation of county-owned sites for feasibility of conversion to housing or new housing construction; and finally, identification of funding opportunities and methods to build strong housing development financing. The affordability gap analysis assesses the disparity between current housing costs and the financial capacity of the local workforce, identifying key affordability challenges that hinder access to workforce housing. According to the 2024 state income limits, the median income for a two-person household is just over $95,000, and four-person household is just over $119,000. In analyzing the rental affordability gap, the county is divided into five housing market areas: Santa Maria, Lompoc, San Ynez, South Coast, and Cuyama. Rents vary significantly across different housing market areas, or HMAs, within the county and are highest in the South Coast. For the six-cycle housing element, approximately 50% of residents live in the unincorporated South Coast HMA, indicating a large housing need in that area. Households earning less than 120% of the 2024 area median income struggle to afford the county's market rate apartment rents. Based on findings, the workforce income levels were redefined for rental housing to encompass households earning 30% to 120% of area median income. In analyzing the ownership affordability gap, the annual income required to afford the county's median-priced home is roughly 265% of the 2024 area median income for a two-person household. Home prices are, again, the highest in the South Coast housing market area. Between May 2019 and May 2024, median home prices increased by 61% compared to a 50%, increase in the county's median income during the same period. And I'll note that that does not mean that everyone got a 50% raise in that five-year period. Given the affordability gap, findings suggest the existing definition of workforce income is applicable to ownership housing at 121% to 200% of the area median income. Next, Harrison Associates analyzed the efficacy of existing county programs and identified model programs in similar communities. This analysis also included assessing access to website visitors, both developers and residents. Recommendations from the consultant included revising webpages to clarify and highlight existing housing programs and the impact of past housing programs; review model programs in similar communities; implement policies to incentivize workforce housing and mitigate existing challenges; and employer-sponsored housing models for replication. In this case, Harris analyzed sixteen successful workforce housing case study projects and identified several successful program models, including Cottage Health Systems Mortgage Assistance Program. The Funding Opportunities and Financing Resources analysis provided an in-depth look at available funding sources and financing mechanisms to be leveraged by the county to support the development of new workforce housing projects. Some of the roadblocks developers face to build cost-effective workforce housing are listed in the orange blocks on this slide. The county leverages local, regional, state, and federal financial resources to support local goals and programs. Additional financial resources not currently utilized by the county to increase funding for the development or preservation of affordable housing include private equity and bond measures. Analysis of current public and private funding opportunities and financing strategies for workforce housing development offered the recommendations for the county noted on this slide. First, pursue opportunities and strategies in which the county is an eligible applicant. Recommendations for different funding methods include private equity, grant funding, Joint Powers Authority, or Certificates of Participation. And second, engage the developer committee to pursue opportunities for which the county is not an eligible applicant, as many funding opportunities and financing strategies are only available to developers. The County Housing Opportunity Sites analysis examined leveraging county assets, identifying underutilized or strategically-located properties that could be developed or redeveloped to expand our county's workforce housing stock. This step included a feasibility analysis of 21 sites or properties, analyzing the potential for housing development on each site to serve the workforce population ranging from 30% to 200% of area median income. The filtration process used geographic information systems, or GIS, data focusing on several factors, including flood and fire hazard, environmental sensitivity, proximity to resources amenities, and coastal zone status. The 21 sites analyzed were categorized by redevelopment potential based on research and consulting with developers. Categories ranged from Tier One, high potential to redevelop in the near future, to Tier Five, low redevelopment potential with significant constraints. The study details analysis of each site, but in April, the Board directed prioritizing action on two sites. Of the acres of underutilized government-owned land throughout the county that would be prime for affordable workforce housing, the Board recommended action on two of the sites analyzed, which require additional due diligence. At 123 East Correo Street, the Board directed staff to prepare a Request for Proposals, or RFP, for a lower-to-moderate-income workforce affordable housing development at the current site of the probation building, and returned to the Board for authorization to issue an RFP in the first quarter of fiscal year 2526. I'll note, this site may yield 60 units. Second, at the current site of the County Administration, Engineering, and Human Resources in downtown Santa Barbara, the site where we are today, the Board provided direction to staff to focus on the development of housing rather than installation of solar panels in the downtown campus parking lot. As housing was selected, staff will examine the feasibility of utilizing the current site, including the parking lot, for housing. And I'll note, this site may yield in the range of 100 units. I'll turn it now over to Andrew Kish, Senior Housing Program Specialist.
Thank you, Lucille. The thorough examination just reviewed informed the development of specific recommended implementation actions designed to enhance workforce housing initiatives and address unique challenges and opportunities within the county. By leveraging these insights and fostering continuing, continued stakeholder collaboration, the county will create sustainable housing solutions that support the economic vitality and well-being of the community. Within the study, Harris recommends a core group of implementation measures, and staff further groups these recommendations into two broad categories. The first group includes measures staff recommends pursuing without delay. The second group includes measures staff recommends be deferred until available resources are identified and secured to pursue them. Group one recommendations include the pursuit of pro-housing designation, the update of the inclusionary housing ordinance, and the revision of the short-term rental ordinance, all of which I'll detail within the next few slides. The study acknowledges the need for ongoing sources of revenue and notes several methods to be employed over time. However, the study prioritizes the pro-housing designation program established by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which encourages local governments to implement housing-focused policies and offers incentives such as prioritize access to state funding and technical assistance. Grant funding, in conjunction with other resources, can help the county bridge the financial gap between the cost of affordable housing development and the availability of state and federal funding. Communities holding such designation are awarded special incentive funding by the state, and pro-housing designated jurisdictions are automatically awarded extra points in competitive funding programs. These extra points are especially advantageous in applications for such opportunities. Finally, there are other funding opportunities made available only to communities who hold such designations. Staff presented a full report on this issue to the Board in May of 2025 and obtained Board authorization to submit an application to the state for the county to receive pro-housing designation. An application has been posted for public review and comment. It's important to note, the application does not propose actions beyond what was approved in the Housing Element Update. Specifically, it does not recommend further rezones. The six-cycle housing element update recommended several actions to update the inclusionary housing ordinance, some of which were adopted by the Board of Supervisors on March 18, such as adding inclusionary requirements for 100% rental projects. The study recommends further ordinance updates to make the IHO more aligned with current market and economic conditions, with a particular focus on increasing the production of workforce and affordable housing. A key next step to perform is an initial financial feasibility analysis to include current market factors for each housing market area. Currently, short-term rentals are unregulated in the coastal areas and permitted only in the commercial and special-purpose zones in the inland areas of the county. The county's six-cycle housing element includes Program 19 for short-term rentals, which outlines a plan to amend zoning ordinances to introduce short-term rental program for the coastal zone. This program aims to balance affordable recreational lodging with the preservation of local workforce housing. The study recommends expanding upon the efforts of Program 19 through specified action. As noted previously, the second group of recommendations from this study includes measures staff recommends be deferred until available resources are identified and secured to pursue them. Are we on group two? Are we on the right side? Okay. Group two includes consultant recommendations to be deferred. Pursuing partnerships with private equity firms. Following the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic, affordable housing has become a focus for the private investment community. Specifically, private investors, funds, and lenders have become interested in funding affordable housing projects and acquiring and upgrading aging market rate rental properties. This presents our community with an opportunity to increase the supply of affordable housing in an environment with scarce public subsidies. The study details steps to pursue private equity in the development of affordable workforce housing projects. Considering establishing a community land trust. A community land trust is a nonprofit organization that acquires and manages land to ensure long-term housing affordability. Establishing a community land trust can be a strategic solution to address the lack of workforce housing currently available in the county. The study details further specific benefits and steps to establishing a community land trust. And to revise and expedite the implementation of six-cycle housing element programs. Annually, staff prepares and presents to the Planning Commission and the Board a report on progress in implementing the various programs outlined in the housing element. This report describes the county's process in meeting its regional housing needs allocation. To the extent the Board is interested in expediting implementation of some programs more quickly than the schedule identified in the housing element, staff suggests the annual report or the long-range work program will be the appropriate time to determine which programs, if any, should be considered for expedited action, and provide direction to staff accordingly. With that being said, I'll turn the presentation back over to Joe for a conclusion.
All right. So, in terms of what is next, the study did detail the recommended action steps, next steps, and a proposed timeline. So, at this point, we're open to any questions you might have about the study or next steps.
I have some questions. I didn't mean that ominously. So, could, would you mind going to slide 14? I think they were numbered, weren't they? There you go. Okay. On the pro-housing designation program, you can see about two-thirds way down, it says, "by streamlining the approval process and removing barriers." We've kind of had this tidal wave that keeps coming back, and it's kind of coming from Sacramento, I guess. I'm being a smartass, I'm sorry. But it's, and it's all about streamlining the approval process and removing barriers. So, whenever I see that, I think, oh, what's it mean? And so, what does it mean in the context of this pro-housing designation? What approval process are we going to further streamline, and what more barriers are we going to remove?
Sure. Commissioner Park through the chair. In terms of streamlining our application to the state for pro-housing designation, cites programs and policies and efforts that are straight from the Housing Element Update. So, in terms of streamlining, anything that references streamlining in the Housing Element Update is also in the pro-housing designation application. So, that may, an example of that may be moving through processes more quickly if there are additional resources.
Okay. It doesn't sound like we've got something new to learn about in another seminar from Mr. Tuttle on more streamlined housing processes.
Commissioner Park, through the chair, if I may. I think what we're intending to convey in that slide is that it affords maximum local discretion as to what would seem appropriate in our community as compared to another community. And so, it affirms, I think, the whole notion of local control and being able to determine, are there particular measures, for example, are there more opportunities for designating locations as a matter of right as opposed to a discretionary permit? And that's something, obviously, that the Commission and the Board would have to carefully consider.
Okay. My next questions all essentially relate to the use of county properties. I made a comment when this came up, when? Did it last few weeks ago? And it was, oh, it's like the county is going to stick a bunch of builders' remedy projects in the middle of the city of Santa Barbara. And I know that's kind of sensitive because I've got a Santa Barbara city planner two seats away to me, to my left. And, but it's kind of a serious comment, and that is, if we look at the probation department site, the old one, does current city of Santa Barbara zoning allow 60 units?
Yes.
It does?
When we provided that estimate, that was based on city zoning.
All right. So, we're not walking into a sort of a conflict or controversy area with the city in which we are located, then.
Certainly not from a zoning perspective. There may be differences in other dimensions, but not from that.
There'll be some. And it bears on how we do it, too. Because, you know, my office was that-a-way, and I saw when this building went up, it blocked my view of the mountains. And it never would have been allowed, except it was a county building, and it sort of preempted city zoning, is what happened. And that's one route, you know? If the county develops these projects, then it will preempt other local zoning. On the other hand, that's usually not considered the most efficient way to actually do things, and you're looking for your private partners. And if they do, then they don't necessarily enjoy that same exemption. So, that's kind of what I'm getting at in these questions. Well, let me move on. This is how this, I'm going to ask how this all relates to housing. I'll explain why. I really carefully went over the numbers with the interactive map and other things on the housing element. And we were adjusting this stuff up till, like, the minute before our last Planning Commission hearing, and then that's what the Board went from. So, it was important stuff to do that. And it was critical, frankly, to take every single county site and say, whoopee, yep, it's rezoned, because we needed those numbers. One thing that all of us that spent a lot of time on the housing element probably saw as a future nightmare was that we wouldn't wait till the next housing cycle to do this again. Because if it's looking to the state that these things won't actually get built, then it's going to force us to reopen even during the cycle. I think I've got that more or less right, and I know that our director's looking at me, or was looking at me. And we don't really want to do that. But I thought, you know, I think with the way we did our beauty contest with the big developers, they're probably going to come through, okay? My concern was on the county sites, because on the county sites, we said, we'll rezon them, but we didn't have specific developers in mind. We didn't have applications, and they had some ambitious goals. I remember 50% affordable housing, and yet, we're not getting anything like that from any of the private projects. Where am I going with this? It seems to me that the giant question that relates to your study is, how will the county itself make decisions on what's acceptable? itself make decisions on what's acceptable for a developer partner to develop one of these county projects? And so the county is saying, here's the problem, but at a key decision to solve that problem rests with the county.
Commissioner Park, I'm going to interject. I think that our lovely visitors here from community services have a time constraint. Is that correct? When do you need to leave?
We would prefer to make sure that we're complete in responding to you, so we can adjust our schedule if the commission wants to be further engaged.
Okay, because we do have, yeah, we have a couple other questions.
Sure. We'll be happy to adjust accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I did have something I wanted to add to Commissioner Park's comment through the chair. You know, because these county sites are sort of hanging out there, right? We didn't actually rezonate them, we just designated them, because we don't have to follow our own zoning.
Right, that's right.
But we just designated them for a certain unit count. And the state essentially gave us some provisions in the housing element that said we had to report back to them about which sites we're developing and how they're being developed, because they wanted to ensure that the county was not just putting sort of fake sites to meet their arena. So we have some timeframes that we have to meet, and I think the first project that the board directed CSD to work through is the probation site, because those folks are moving out and into a new building, and so that's kind of the most obvious choice. And I do want to mention that we did increase the numbers for that site since the housing element, because one of our other county sites fell off the list because, over by the food bank, because it's needed for another county facility. So when you designate county facilities like that, we're going to see some kind of movement. But to assure Commissioner Park and the rest of the commission, we're looking at the city's average unit size density program and following that concept, so that we would be consistent with what the city is allowing on the other sites in the downtown area.
But this report and its recommendations don't make specific recommendations on how to negotiate with the private partners for development of those sites.
That's correct.
Is that right? I think if you'd had a lot more time and a lot more money, ideally, you would, but we are where we are.
Commissioner Park through the chair, if I can just conceptualize an approach here that might help clarify. The board asked that we develop a request for proposal in order to solicit prospective developers to work in partnership with the county. Crafting that RFP affords the county an opportunity to establish criteria and expectations related to income levels, related to densities, and the like, and then can work together with a selected developer, the preferred developer, if you will, to drill down into the nitty-gritty of the details of how that gets accomplished, the financial viability of the preferred approach, and then determine whether it's something that the county wants to move forward with. So the RFP process is, I suspect, one that's going to be used as a matter of course, because it provides the county the flexibility of determining and identifying expectations.
I think that's an excellent point. And I see here we'll have RFPs for the probation department lot and possibly our parking lot, not all the other properties that are in the housing element that are county properties. But I think this RFP developed for those will be a great vehicle for developing a model for all the others. So I hope we all take that opportunity. And by the way, I really appreciate this. This is a great spot to kind of include all this data and things that are floating around out there, floating in my mind, and now it's in one spot that I can look at, so thank you.
Great, thank you. We have a couple other questions. Commissioner Reed? Or comments? Questions or comments?
Both, probably, by the time I'm done. First, I just noticed, one of the things included in your recommendations changed the term and definition of workforce to what?
Sure. Commissioner Reed through the chair. This is expanding it to include different levels of area median income. So often, the term workforce is understood to mean a certain classification, so teachers, public safety. But the folks who are working in agriculture, who are working in hospitality, who are working in education, they're also part of the workforce. So we want to make sure that we were addressing the area median income of those different classifications.
Okay. Would workforce also include county employees?
Yes, workforce also includes county employees.
Okay, because I find it interesting that among the, you show hierarchies of income according to occupation and things. You did not mention even like median income of Santa Barbara County employees, things like that. And I think the income levels for law enforcement and firefighters, if you look at, like, for example, Transparent California and other sources that give average income levels of government employees, the levels listed in this report seem low for those particular occupations. Maybe that's an issue better addressed with the firm that put it together, but I'd hope ultimately those get adjusted to make them a little more realistic. I would hate it for this to be characterized as a method of providing reasonable housing for county employees, kind of a special program to favor county employees. So I'd like the income levels to be more reflective of what we see by those other publications, I would say, for lack of a better term. Secondly, Director Armus, you talked about, you know, the desire to have more local control of funding. Well, with the pro-housing designation, I know one of the benefits that was cited makes it simpler and more likely to obtain state funding with these initiatives. Would that state funding, though, like so much other state funding, come with a list of requirements and specifications that would remove the ability for local control?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. We don't think so. In particular, the state has looked at the housing element as the principal document to determine whether a community is really advancing the pro-housing objective that's described here. And so as it examines the housing element, it's really using that as a fundamental threshold review, if you will, to determine how a community is addressing and seeks to address the housing crisis that we're experiencing in this county. Additionally, as was noted, some of the funding sources are limited only to those communities that have been designated pro-housing. Statewide, there are not a lot of communities that have received that designation. In doing a little quick research, I found that there were somewhere in the neighborhood of about six to seven counties of the 58, and about 40 of the nearly 500 cities. So it's a small number, and the state is trying to encourage policies and programs that support the development of housing, creating incentives on the grant side in that respect.
Okay. Additional, it's kind of to bridge on what Commissioner Park mentioned, I would applaud anything you could do towards, as you say, streamlining the approval process and removing barriers to help these initiatives proceed. That would be excellent, because I do not think thus far Santa Barbara County has a reputation for doing that sort of thing. I spent a great deal of time out in the San Joaquin Valley and other areas where, you know, creation of new housing is robust, to say the least, and the regulatory environment is much friendlier. So it would be great to see that happen here, at least with respect to these, if not more. But, you know, the other side, that's something that we see most often, a wonderful initiative gets approved, but you know what the shortest measurable unit of time is? The time from which a project, an admirable and necessary project, is approved here, and the time someone lodges an appeal. Have you spent any time considering that side of the process? Because particularly workforce and low-income housing is almost guaranteed, unfortunately, to engender appeals. I mean, it's nearly a cottage industry, if not an avocation, it seems, for people in the central, in the Santa Barbara County. So have you taken that into account and come up with a Plan B?
Well, I think that really is an excellent question to ask to our planning and development director.
What I did want to say is, the state sort of anticipated that. And so when we were, when the county rezoned properties to meet our arena, if those projects are 20 units per acre or greater, and they provide at least 20% level of affordability, that's a ministerial permit. And they don't have other discretionary elements to them, like a subdivision map or something along those lines. So we are seeing, like, right now, we have two, three sites. Well, it's really two, but they've divided them up into three. The Tatum site, the Sam Marcos Ranch site, and then the market rate, and then the affordable component. So that's 1,400 units that are in the process right now. They're ministerial permits, no appeals.
Right. We will never see those, even though the Sam Marcos, even though.
That's right.
Yeah. Ranchers Sam Marcos told us that they would be coming back because it was builder's remedy, right? So that's.
They got their rezoned, so they did not need to pursue a builder's remedy application at the time.
And we don't see Tatum or that on Hollister. So 1,400 units are going through without any planning commission review after the housing element, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm not really keen on that, but I know that's the law, so.
Yep.
It's a concern for the general public that isn't here today, so it's going to be. Anyway, Commissioner Reed, any more?
I think, you know, very useful. I think it has potential, great benefit. Not so keen on taking over our park and lot, but, you know, that's fine. Or Waller Park, but I think it's, it could have great value.
Was Waller Park one of the sites?
It's one of the not-so-popular ones. It's at the lowest tier on that table, but it would really get a lot of people in uprising in Santa Maria.
Yeah.
It's lower tier for a reason. It's unlikely to change its use.
Commissioner Martinez, your light is on.
Yes. I'm kind of, well, I don't know exactly what questions are going to be appropriate here or not, because it says, I'm reading, it says discussion, so I'm just taking it as a discussion. And reading over this report quickly, I appreciate the fact that on one side, this reporter's saying that the cost gaps of affordable housing development can be addressed through state and federal funding, but at least from what I'm reading here is that it's been recognized, at least thus far in this report, is what I'm calling it, that these public subsidies are becoming even more scarce. So it doesn't seem like that's more of an option, at least from my reading of this. And I see nodding your head like, yeah, you're kind of recognizing that. So, and I appreciate you defining the workforce. Is the goal here ownership, or just to have a place that's affordable to live, like a rental situation? Or is it a duel? Is it a fork?
I think if we explore the concept, it really isn't simply to suggest one avenue over another. As indicated, ownership is going to be a challenge for those that are on the lower end of the income continuum, whereas rental and, in fact, our inclusionary housing amendments recognize that we can make some inroads into the rental housing element, and that's going to be important. Ownership is obviously something that is the American dream, but may not be achievable in every instance, and so we want to make sure that the array of options are available for residents that need housing.
Yeah, and I kind of agree that that American dream is becoming less and less, and you look at cities and even Europe, and it's renting. New York, Boston, San Francisco. My next one is, and I noticed that this process is looking at a timeframe of approximately a two-year timeframe, which is what's indicated. So in addressing these issues, I didn't see in here like a forecasting, which is going to be kind of hard, especially nowadays, in regards to the increasing elements of just the cost of living. I mean, I just saw a report where colleges increased so much. You got health insurance, you got auto costs, you got, you know, without mentioning and getting into political euphoria of the tariffs and all these things. How are you trying to take that element into consideration?
Commissioner Martinez through the chair. I think our objective is to try to draw focus on those areas where we can impact in the immediate timeframe. And so, for example, as was mentioned earlier, the probation site was selected as the initial location for a number of reasons. It allows us to test and hopefully prove that the concept of a public partnership works. Secondly, it's fortuitous that that site is going to be cleared in the next couple of years, and so we don't have to, excuse me, that the new site will be completed in the next couple of years, so we don't have to deal with relocation of existing staff. And then lastly, we think that development takes time. It's simply a fact nowadays. And so if we can embark on two major initiatives in the next few years, both the probation site and the downtown campus, those would be pretty remarkable achievements. And then we can use our learnings from that and apply them in other sites, hopefully streamline that effort as well, based on what we've learned on the two sites I've described.
Okay. And then my next question would focus on the workforce itself, and I know you gave a general description of what workforce you're looking at. But are you also taking into consideration the changing dynamics of the workforce, not just the income? I'm talking about the culture of saying, I want to work at home. I mean, I'm looking at San Francisco, where they're trying to get everybody back in, and they can't. I'm looking at the state, where the administrative judges who govern these things says, I'm not going back to Sacramento, I want to work from home now. I want to do all my hearings from home, and because we don't want to contribute to the carbon output. Are you considering those things, or does that even come into the horizon?
Commissioner Martinez, I don't think we've taken it to that level yet, but we do understand, broadly speaking, because sustainability is one of the divisions within our department, the value of locating housing proximate to workplace locations and proximate to other amenities, retail, recreation, and the like, so that we can make it more convenient for the occupants to avail themselves of services and workplaces.
That's why I brought up that, because, I mean, that's the way I think, but the frame mind of people is maybe changing at the same time, and I know there's studies out there. And then I did notice one, I looked up your, I really took an interest in regards to the 16 successful, got to put my glasses on, I'm getting old, the 16 successful workforce housing case studies. And I noticed a lot of those have restrictive deeds, 40 years, 55 years. I know that some of those things, which I've had experience with, is that the problem is, is when it comes to ownership, then they turn around, they rent it, and they move somewhere else, and they make money off what was supposed to be workforce housing. But I did notice that one was in regards to around the North County Jail, and I found that interesting, because I looked at the negatives, the negative impacts, but I also think one that was missing was is the surrounding agricultural activities, the right to farm, those kind of things. And I'm glad to see you nodded your head like, yeah, they're there, it just wasn't listed. That was just my only last comment. But thank you. Thank you for your time.
I just had a couple follow-up questions. You included some statistics about the pro-housing designation applications, that there were six counties out of, so far that you know about, and then 40 cities out of 500. Was that your stat? Is there a deadline for the pro-housing designation applications due now? Or is it open for a while?
Chair Bradley, it is open at this time, but each year, there is incentive funding that is only available for that year. So we're planning to submit the application in the next week or two, and the state will have 60 days to respond. And assuming that we have the designation and a fantastic score, then we will have perfect timing for the state's supernova, which should come out in August. So we'll be able to apply for funding in this current, or the next fiscal year. But each year, there's a certain pot of funds that are available.
It's just, it's kind of interesting that so many agencies aren't grabbing this. But, you know, Santa Barbara City, as you know, is doing it, and I think Galita, right, everything on the South Coast. So, anyway, interesting. So this is a really, really, I did not. So this is a really, really, I did not have a chance to review this and absorb it before today, so I really appreciate you guys providing it. And if we had any other questions or want to have a continuing conversation, because I, this is not, topic is not going away, right? Who should we contact to?
If, if your, if the staff will simply reach out to us, we can schedule another presentation and have a fuller discussion. And if you'd like to have a one-on-one briefing, feel free to let us know, and we'll schedule that as well.
That's really generous. I appreciate that. And I'd ask the other commission if you think we want to have, you know, a phase two of this, after we absorb it. What does everybody think?
I would. And, and you want me to say that, because you don't want me to ask more questions right now. But a, a question that's burning for me, but it will, it'll take some discussion. And it has to do with availability of funding for subsidization of housing projects. Just in general, it's been my understanding that there were programs, have been programs for low-income affordable, okay? But nothing at all existed for moderate affordable. And that's why I was kind of thinking that small-scale buildings remedy might actually be good, because they could build 100% moderate affordable. And I noticed that in the definitions in, in, in your, in your presentation, just because of the way things are here, the definition of what falls under low income seems to be, you know, higher than I understood it to be, which is maybe a good thing, because maybe it means that there's more availability of, of funding for projects that would benefit teachers, firefighters, nurses, et cetera. So I'd like to hear more about that and ask more questions about that sometime. But I, I think that that's probably not for today. And
I mean, we, it's not a rush in the next quarter, and I know you guys are all busy, so why don't we work with our planning staff and maybe schedule another one? Maybe not all of you have to come back, but we love having all of you.
Well, I, I wanted, I wanted to address that, too. You know, I've spent a lot of time with, with our P and D staff on the housing element. I spent a lot of time with Jeff Lindgren and others in Park's division in CSD. I've never met any of you before, and I'm glad to meet you all here. I'm glad you came. I'm really flattered, actually, that you did and presented this. And whoever put this all together did a great job. So I really appreciate that. I look forward to talking to you all more. Bye-bye.
All right. Thank you. I think that, that's probably it from our questions, and we'll follow up. Thank you again. The projection report, correct?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, we did coordinate with staff during the sharing, and we can move forward with canceling both of those hearings, June 25th and July 2nd.
Okay. Do we have a motion? It looks like Commissioner Cooney.
Yes, I've been waiting all meeting for this motion. To cancel the scheduled hearings for the 2nd and 9th of July.
So Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, it's June 25th and July 2nd.
Ah, I had the wrong note, okay.
Unless you also want to do July 9th.
No, 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 no. I, I heard July 9th in the original discussion of what might be an alternative. So the, the motion is addressing the two scheduled hearings on the 25th of June and the 2nd of July. That's my motion.
Okay. You have a motion?
I just have a question. And I'm going to second the motion regardless of the answer to the question. Do we need to add that the items for the 2nd are moved to the 9th and happens in Santa Barbara and all those things? You'll, you'll just do that. Good.
Yeah.
So I second the motion.
Okay, we have motion second to cancel the meetings of June 25th and July 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I think that concludes our agenda today. Thank you very much. We will see everybody back on, mm?
Next week.
Next week, yeah, just next week. What's happening?